Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thanks for being patient with some technical difficulties. Kind of hard sometimes when you have people online and people here. I want to make sure everybody's included. So, um, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have a lot to get to. So, um, I just want to make one acknowledgement and that is that today is Veterans Day. And on this day, we extend our gratitude to all our military personnel, both past and present, for their unwavering commitment to our country. There were events and activities at each building today to honor the courage and the bravery and the service of those who protect our freedom and security. And we thank them for their service to all of us. We had some good events today. I know the administrators can attest to that. And we certainly appreciate our veterans and our community members that are in the armed services that allow us to have the free life that we have. So, thank you. Okay, we have three short presentations to get to this evening. We have a presentation from Mr. Del Sandro, who we've commissioned to help us figure out the elementary playgrounds. So, I figured we had a renowned person in the field, which we are fortunate to have one of our community members. So, he's going to walk us through that. We're going to go through some strategic plan survey. We're going to briefly, I'm going to walk you through that. And then we have our administrators that are going to present on student life B and do a fall season wrap-up and a winter season preview. So, let's start with... Oh, just to remind you, if you're here and you haven't signed in, we appreciate if you'd sign in at some point. Sign in is right up here on the table. Let's start with Mr. Del Sandro. I'll kind of talk about how we started here. As you know, for years and years, our elementary playgrounds are, have, the playground area has been, it's like a dust bowl. We've tried all sorts of different solutions, try to fix those issues, and it continues to be a problem. So fortunately, we have a renowned person in our community who's an agronomist and, you know, a lot of people across the country know him. And fortunately for us, he has connections into the field that we don't. So, he's been great to work with. And Dave, before you get started, I want to tell you how much we appreciate you helping us out on this project. And we're excited to hear what he has to say. And we will be making a recommendation to the board for our voting meeting next week. Mr. Del Sandro, you want to take over?
Yes, thank you, Neil. If you find that renowned person, let me know, because it's not me. But very kind words at the beginning, thank you. So, um, thank you for your time this evening, the opportunity to discuss with everybody what we've been working on. So, quick background, my name is David Del Sandro. I live at 712 10th Street, right across from my school here. I've won in third grade, won in kindergarten, and won on her way. Good luck if any of you are still here when she gets here, because you will need it, trust me. With that said, my professional background, I've worked the majority of my career at Oakmont Country Club, taking care of the golf course. The last six years of my tenure there was golf course superintendent. Upon leaving there, my partner and I started our own turf grass consulting advising firm. We work with golf courses, country clubs, and corporate clients across the country. Why is that relevant, only to qualify why I'm standing in front of you right now? That is it. Due to those reasons, personal proximity to the school, community, and school district relations, in addition to my specific experience and industry network, I've spoken with Neil and Dr. Z here at the school, and we're approached different ways that we can help. Any recommendations to improve the playgrounds at both, excuse me, at both the elementary sites? Started a simple conversation and evolved over the last several months into a comprehensive action plan, which we'll discuss this evening. Thank you, sir. How's this look? Beautiful. Man, you guys are good, huh?
Yeah, no, we're not.
Well done. Well done. So, we'll start, you know, real quick. I think the issues are pretty obvious to everyone. The use of volume density, not just the amount of days these playgrounds are used, but the amount of kids on the playgrounds on those given days. Heavy compaction has led to surface manipulation, poor infiltration. There's impaired drainage at both sites, inadequate and/or absence of subsurface drainage. This has increased into a potential increased incidence, excuse me, in injuries due to the hardness of the playing surface because of all those aforementioned characteristics. In addition, the ongoing maintenance, the scope and expense has not stopped the deteriorating nature of the playgrounds, let alone started to fix it. Lastly, they're intermittently unusable. As anybody in the school or community has known, they've been closed on an on-and-off basis depending on weather conditions. Although we've been blessed with a very dry last couple of months, even in those conditions, they were closed intermittently also. So, the objectives from our endeavor would improve, obviously, the usability, the safety, aesthetics, decrease ongoing maintenance, scope and expense. And obviously, if the district is interested, provide an expansive positive impact on both elementary sites, let alone the community who uses the sites as a whole. Our process, just to kind of walk you guys briefly through it. Definition of problem statement, pretty obvious here in this case. Instant goal alignment from both campuses, once we talked to the personnel at both sites. We did do a thorough evaluation considering remediation and project implementation from restoring a natural grass surface and what the amount of work and scope initially for the capital project and then the annual expense, if we were to try to maintain an actual grass surface with turf on it for the short and long term. And once we pitted those metrics against the installation and maintenance of an artificial turf system, the answer, not only from a viability standpoint, but also from a cost comparison, became pretty obvious relatively quickly. We then went through competitive bidding, defined scope of work and specifications, negotiated with our preferred contractor and checked those references. Those last four bullets there, excuse me, yes, last four bullets, they'll pretty much outline the remainder of our discussion here this evening. From a competitive bidding process, went out to three different companies, looked at a wide variety of applicable materials that would be suitable for our desired uses. Preferred contractor, Southwest Greens, they came in at the lowest bid. We did build in an 8% contingency, just from a conceptual development standpoint. As you guys know, with any excavation whatsoever and without any relatively accurate ASB builds, we could come across things that we just can't foresee. Next, we'll get into, as you can see, the infographic on the paper that you have. It's pretty rudimentary, but it gives you the basic idea of what the construction specification looks like. As far as what that sequence looks like in real life, start with an excavation of both sites to about, you know, six inches plus or minus level. Remove all that material. Install subsurface drainage at both facilities. Prepare, grade, compact the subgrade, install a synthetic geotextile layer on top of that subgrade, and then start building the base material. That will consist of approximately four inches of a 2A modified limestone, graded, rolled, compacted to specification, followed by approximately one inch of limestone dust, graded, rolled, and compacted to specification. Couple items of note, which, and we have some samples, excuse me, I forgot to mention. We'll pass around later. But a couple items of note, one is the padding that we specified for the constructability of the fields. Actually, this, it's a relative, it's known as Brock's Company makes. It's relatively newer product, passed five to 10 years plus or minus, rapidly becoming industry standard, best practice, significantly improves the drainage, longevity, safety, performance, shock absorption, longevity of the turf and the entire system holistically. Therefore, we include it in our construction specification. From a turf standpoint, this is a sample of the, oh, I pressed the wrong button, excuse me. There we go. This is a sample of the infill turf that we've selected. It's a, it's known as Play 50 is the, I don't know, the make model, I guess you'd call it. It's made by Shaw Industries. It is specifically designed for high-traffic, multi-use fields and playgrounds. It is a one-and-a-half-inch pile height. What that refers to is the length of the fibers. It is IPE-MA certified, ADA accessible. And this turf system on top of the padding wood, we thought in our investigation and research and reference checking, provide the best opportunity to have a viable playground that'll perform and function as we all desire. From an infill standpoint, you know, some of the negatives that people see of an infill, so when I say infill system, we would fill through the installation process. This pile height will be infilled approximately 50%, so about three-quarters of an inch, with a silica-based material. That provides weight to hold the product down. And, you know, the horror stories when these synthetic infill system fields were first installed, the black chrome rubber, right, that would show up everywhere in a ubiquitous fashion. Well, the good news is, research, technology over the past, again, decade-plus has really rendered that non-existent anymore in today's application. So, the silica material that we'd be using to backfill, not only performs great from a drainage and traction standpoint, durability standpoint, but also, once it's installed properly, it is relative, I mean, it's not going to move. It's going to be much, it's going to be extremely cleaner to the interior and exterior surfaces around the school than any dust and/or dirt, mud that is currently being tracked. So, alleviate anyone's concerns from that standpoint. There we go. Once we had a, once we had a preferred contractor, we leaned into them from negotiation standpoint, we were able to achieve a 7% off-season discount. That discount is already reflected in the numbers that you're looking at. We were able to negotiate two years of free annual maintenance. The first two years are usually the most cumbersome and the most expensive. It's about a $4,000 value. I would anticipate, depending on how the field matures in the first two years, an annual expense of $1,000 to $2,000 for annual maintenance at both sites after the first two years of free maintenance. We also persuaded the contractor to install an additional one-year workmanship installation warranty. That's one year above what is typical in the industry and the 15-year material manufacturer warranty is standard for the materials we selected. From a logistics standpoint, installation takes probably about three to four weeks of full working days. With the, with the potential off-season installation, ideally, we'd start right after the holidays in January and have about two months, weather and site conditions dependent, to actually execute that three to four weeks of actual work. If it goes longer, the contractor said there'd be no additional cost on the schools and for that. One additional item of note of our preferred contractors, they do all of their excavation and subgrade preparation in-house. That is uncommon for most artificial turf installers. Typically, it's a third-party subcontractor, which adds another layer of complexity and management to the process that we'll be able to omit with our selected, with our preferred contractor, excuse me. From a project management standpoint, if the school district decides to move forward, I'm more than happy to volunteer my time to help oversight and management from inception all the way through completion. Lastly, we checked two references, South Hills Catholic Academy and Upper St. Clair Township. Not only did they use our preferred contractor, they also used a relatively identical construction specification as to what we are proposing. I'll let you guys read those references at your convenience, but they both came back in a very positive fashion. That's all I got. I appreciate everyone's time and attention. There's some samples up here. I know you guys have a busy meeting. Feel free to jump on those at your convenience after. And if anybody has any questions, I'm more than happy to try to answer.
Any questions, board members?
I know you mentioned drainage on here, but there'd basically be no difference, like for the neighbors or the school, in your best guess, as far as water runoff?
There, so, good point. It will only be an improvement. This infiltrates and drains so quickly that no water will run off of it, because it'll accept it, move it through the profile and into the outlet drainage relatively instantaneously.
That's awesome. And for the warranties, I guess two questions. One, do they run consecutive or concurrent? So, like, is it like two years of the free maintenance and then two years of the workmanship warranty? Or is it two years of both of the warranties at the same time?
So, the one is a warrant, I'm sorry if I didn't articulate clearly enough. They're both, they will both be enacted from substantial completion of the project.
Oh, okay.
And the two years of annual maintenance is really not a, I'm sorry if I misspoke, but that's not a warranty, that's just annual maintenance that the company performs, that they're throwing in at no charge to incentivize the district to consider them as the contractor. The workmanship warranty is if the installation on behalf of the contractor were to be proven to be defective or faulty within the first two years upon substantial completion, then they would contractually come back and remedy any workmanship defects at their own expense from a material and installation standpoint.
Awesome, thank you.
Sorry about that, if I didn't explain that properly.
This might be more of a question for Sheila, but is there a point where this becomes cost-neutral from the money that we would be putting into the maintenance of the grass and the playgrounds all these years and having terrible grass too, investing in this?
Yeah, so, I mean, I'll let Sheila dive in. I'm not privy to any of the current school district contracts. I'm more than happy to look at them if you guys would like me to, but I think a little bit out of the purview of my scope. However, the current, so there's a quantitative aspect, in my humble opinion, and a qualitative aspect. The quantitative aspect is going to be difficult to compare what is being spent now on just the, you know, roughly 14,000 square foot of surface, six and a half here, seven and a half at Werner. As far as what's being done now, it's going to be difficult to obviously justify the expense of this investment strictly from a quantitative standpoint. But with that being said, if the district were to choose, say, hey, we have to have natural turf, then that would necessitate a project of greater magnitude than what this is, to have an engineered root zone mix, like if you were to build something to like a NFL football field, drainage, annual re-sodding, annual aerification, deep tining, verticutting practices, specific fertility, integrated pest management programs. And even if that investment was, even with my experience and expertise in the field, I don't even know if that would produce, because of the amount of traffic, if that investment would produce the desired outcome that I think everybody, obviously, hopefully, would want. So, it's kind of an apples-to-oranges type analysis, in my opinion. But comparing the artificial installation versus kind of that souped-up engineered natural grass project, the, over a 20-year lifespan, the synthetic turf is, I mean, it's literally less than 50% average cost. If you were to extrapolate that one-time capital expense with the ongoing maintenance over a 20-year timeframe, which is more than likely the lifespan of the artificial turf system. Sorry, Sheila, if you can jump in with any details you have with the ongoing...
No, that's okay. I think earlier in the year, Mr. McKenzie and I discussed, I think had talked to Dr. English about looking at getting, either looking at sod or redoing the whole surface. That would have shut down the playgrounds for a significant amount of time. I mean, think about if you redo your own front yard, how long you have to, I mean, you don't have 400 kids running around on it, right? So, cost-effectiveness is going to be that we put $150,000 into two playgrounds. We have a playground for life. We'll all be gone before that ever needs to be thought about getting replaced again. We tried to seed it. We had Recupero, who does the grass cutting for the district, come out. But as you look at the front page, it's of his presentation, of Dave's presentation, it's almost impossible to get grass to grow there because of the amount of traffic that it gets. And, I mean, we would have to literally shut it down for months. Yeah. To water it, to keep caution tape up, to keep the kids off of it. And I think this is a, this is a much better option.
And, I mean, personally...
That's not guaranteed if we grow grass. We might have to spend $30,000 every year to keep that grass there.
Yeah. And the benefits of, just for the kids' sake, I didn't have many peeves when my kids were at the elementary schools, but that was one when they could not be outside on that playground.
You didn't have any what, I'm sorry?
When my kids were here, that was one of my peeves, is that our kids could not use the, could not use the playground. And the kids need that, they need to be outside, they need to be, you know, getting that activity, so...
One item, Mrs. Wilton, from your question. My guess is that the annual, after the first two, three years of maintenance we negotiated, my assumption is the annual maintenance on the artificial turf is probably pretty close to the annual maintenance on the square footage that's currently there. So, that's probably, you know, in even wash, and then it gets back into just the capital expenditure. If that helps.
Not to be grim, but if someone has an accident and bleeds, I mean, what's the, are we cutting out a piece and, I mean...
Simple cleaning protocols, all those instructions will come with the field and will be instructed, the school district employees will be instructed by the contractor.
How to care for it?
There's, you know, over-the-counter remedies to disinfect, specific instances like that. There's also special products that can be purchased and applied to the field to make sure that any bodily fluid issues are handled properly.
Thank you.
And just one more thing. This would be a capital expense. This would be coming out of our capital funds that we have already, correct?
That's correct. Any board members attending virtually, anyone have any questions?
No, I just, I was going to say, hey, Dave, thank you for the presentation. I was just going to say, even just from a simplistic standpoint, Wendy, I kind of know where you were going. How much of Recupero's, you know, mowing going to go down? Because they don't have to do these two spots is, you know, one of the things we could look at. But I, 100%, having, having a child at 10th Street who can't go play in the grass when it's rainy or, you know, bad out. Yeah, I agree. I mean, it's been, it's been a, yeah, it's been rough for a long time. Wendy and I have, our older ones are the same age, so it's been an issue for a while.
Mr. Del Sandro, I want to just repeat, you've been awesome. We really appreciate all of your work. It's nice to have sort of a person who knows the industry to help us and negotiate, help us negotiate and drive down costs. A lot of the other places, it was like almost a lot more, tens of thousands more. So, it's nice having an ace in the hole. So, we appreciate your, your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I'm going to go over some strategic plan survey. As you know, we are up for a new strategic plan for 2025 to 2028. That process starts typically with a strategic plan survey that has gone out to our school community. And I just want to do a brief overview. I don't want to take too much time here. You all have the slides and I've printed them out for you, and it's included in board docs. But just want to give you a general sort of overview of how our school community thought about the questions posed in our strategic plan survey, so... Okay, this first slide, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but it just shows that we have a higher respondents at the lower grades. And as you can imagine, as the students get older, some of the parents don't, you know, didn't respond as much as the K through six parents. So, just something to keep in mind as we go through some of this data. Okay, the first question was just satisfaction and engagement. I just want to kind of set the tone here first and say that these survey res... I've been doing strategic plan surveys for quite some time at a host of different schools and places. I've never seen such positive results. Generally speaking, I think our school community and our parents are really happy and satisfied with what we're doing here in the schools. I've highlighted a couple of things in some of these slides that I want to go over briefly with you as the board. Okay, so these slides, this is a stacked bar graph. On the left is strongly agree and agree in the orange, and gray is disagree, and light purple is strongly agree. The dark purple is not applicable, so you can kind of slice that off. But anyway, this first question is just general satisfaction and engagement. People are generally satisfied. Almost 100% of the 150 respondents are extremely satisfied with the academic programs and the co-curriculars and support services in the district. I put a star on this first one. I put some stars and just some highlights. We're going to go over finance and budget here in a second, but put a pin in, in the budget and use of funds question, because we're going to go over that in more detail. And the best thing, and I share this, is that almost 100% of the respondents feel that they're proud to be a part of the River View family, which makes me really proud as a, as somebody who's an administrator here, to know that. Okay. Second, this is an experience, all of these questions are, and the experience of a parent's oldest child. This first one is about just general teacher quality, overall experience with the educational team. Really high satisfaction here. The only area where there's a slight disagreement here on this slide is teachers' use of Schoology and teams. And I would say, as a parent myself, it depends on sort of how much focus you have on sort of keeping an overall eye on what your students are doing. For me personally, that's, in my house, that's my students', my children's responsibility to handle school and the demands of school. You know, when they were a little younger, we would, we would look at those things a little more often. And then as our kids got older, we allowed them to manage school themselves. But general, general, very, very, very high satisfaction rates with the teaching staff. Next question is just assessments. It's asking about the difficulty of children's assessments, whether they feel like it matches an appropriately appropriate level of challenge and how the school monitors that challenge. Once again, homework and assessments, access to the Home Access Center for parents, grading, et cetera, very, very high satisfaction scores here as well. If anybody wants me to go over anything specifically, just stop me. We can go over, you know, a particular question. As you go, we're going to be doing strategic planning for months. So, this is just the beginning. I wanted to give you a precursor, just to give you a general overview of what the parents were thinking. Sure. Got a question?
Probably just more like a comment in general, over my own experience, about both Schoology teams and Home Access Center, sort of all the digital platforms that are used. I think it just, it would be, at least speaking from the junior, senior high school perspective, just more consistency, I think it would be helpful overall. I feel like they're all good tools, you know, to use, but because folks are using them in different ways across different classes or fashions, that can get kind of tricky to navigate. Like, I couldn't tell you my kids, like, class by class, which school, which teachers using Schoology versus teams versus, you know, whatever. So, more consistency maybe along those would be useful. And same with the Home Access Center. I know I checked that pretty... Uh, I know I, I check that pretty often, um, especially as kids are older and they talk to you less about what's going on in school and grades and things. So I check it pretty often, but I find that like some, you know, classes or teachers maybe are super consistent about putting things in every single week and you find it very easily accessible. And then there are some times where there's half of a nine weeks goes by.
It's a lag, yeah.
Like nothing been updated on a particular class for a long time. And you're like, I hope things are going well. I'm not sure. This doesn't really tell me anything. So, um, it's not necessarily to say it's like good or bad. I think it's just like the consistency could be better because I personally wouldn't necessarily know kind of where to look sometimes for certain things because everybody's sort of using all these tools in a little different way. So just as a, you know, comment for what it's worth, uh, you know, to help the, not only the kids, but also the parents be able to track what's going on and where would I look if I have a question? Or what, you know, what program is this assignment in or that kinda thing?
Sure. Anyone else have any questions so far? Like I said, as you churn through some of this stuff, you can just email me or ask questions as you see fit. There will be additional times when board members and teachers and parents will be asked to come in and sort of give us additional information or dig in to some of these questions a little deeper. Next is the climate and culture. This is a really big focus for the River View School District. Climate and culture, we believe, is foundational to the academic success of students. If students don't feel a sense of belonging, staff don't feel a sense of belonging here at the school or appreciated for the work that they do. Um, you know, the quote is that climate and culture eat strategy for breakfast. So it is a big part of what we do. We want River View to be a really great place to work. And for students, we want River View to be a really great place to go to school and a day that students are looking forward to each and every day. Now, you know, not every student is gonna look forward to school each and every day, but at least when they come in, they know they're comfortable. Uh, the student, or the teachers know them and, uh, they're gonna have a, a challenging, an appropriately challenging day every day. So once again, we're really proud of some of this survey data. It's very, very pos- positive in terms of access to counseling and positive experiences at school. Um, teachers responding favorably to communicating with parents and problem solving and, uh, making sure that the, the teachers and the administration are accessible and approachable at all times. I, the administration specifically have specific goals every year. They've made some really outstanding progress each year. So administrators, uh, definitely work hard to create an open and welcoming environment for everybody. And a place where staff and, and, you know, can come and disagree and, and be a part of the planning process. Okay, this is counseling and career services. It's dark purple because a lot of parents, I, I think they don't have experiences with the kids. Have had tons of interaction with the school counselor, but this is about making sure we're focused on college and career readiness, K through twelve, which is something that we were, are required to do by the state. Not only are required to do it, but it is an important part of what we do. I mean, we are an integral part of the school to work pipeline and we take that responsibility seriously. So this is about transitioning. Once again, very, very high satisfaction rates. Okay, here's infrastructure, food and transportation. Some disagreements here on non-classroom spaces. We need to ask parents a little bit more about this particular question. What is it? Is it the athletic fields? Is it auditoriums? Is it classroom spaces? We need to get, we need to suss that out in a little more detail. And food services, you know, everybody's kinda has an opinion on, on food and options and things like that. Uh, that will change as we continue to churn through this high school kitchen project. Um, that should provide more options, more ways to cook foods and should, should be better for students. And I, I have a feeling that that satisfaction level will go up or some of those small disagreements that we're seeing on that particular metric will improve. And security measures are rated high, although as you know, board, we are continuing to look at security and we're pricing out and taking a look at metal detectors. We're looking at the security officer for the twenty, um, twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And health and safety generally is rated very high, however, which is positive. Okay, here's an area that we're really kinda focused on. Um, I think parents report that, you know, they're not attending board meetings or paying particular attention to the finance and don't have a clear understanding of school finance and budgeting. However, some respondents are claiming they're not satisfied with some of the budgetary decisions. So, um, we need to ask some additional questions here and kinda get to the bottom of what people are talking about. We've already put in some additional processes from the business office and we're going to provide quarterly updates to the community on business and finance and budgetary related items. But I've starred this because this is an area where there is some disagreement here and we need to figure out why. And we need to put some plans into place in the twenty-five, twenty-eight strategic plan to address some of these, um, some of these survey results. Still, overall, pretty positive, but, you know, we still want to, you, I mean, this is why we survey people. We wanna know, we want a three hundred and sixty degree understanding of what the issues are, what the good parts are, what the bad parts are, and we need to improve moving forward.
Just as a-
Sure.
Well, though, I, I think, um, you know, I can't speak to the first couple where it's like I closely monitor information or I regularly attend board meetings. Um, cause clearly I'm here, right? But, um, the last couple, I mean, I can understand the community's stance on disagree or strong disagree. And I think, you know, we've kind of communicated that as a board.
Mm-hmm.
And we would like to see more of the finances or, you know, more in-depth conversations being had around those finances and how they're being spent. So I do think that there are some insights, um, at least from board members, right, that we can take and go in. And I know that, you know, I talked to Sheila about this so many times and, um, and I think that, you know, she definitely has a plan going forward. Um, but I do think that there is that aspect that we have kind of touched upon and I think hopefully it will be addressed and.
Yeah, lots more work to be done there for sure. Sheila, did you wanna comment on it? Are you good?
No, I think you, uh, that you and the board have communicated what your expectations are moving forward. I think with my first year here, I was giving, you know, what I've done in the past. I've had boards that wanted listings of employees and how much they made. I've had boards that didn't want anything, that they just wanted salaries and benefits. So I, there's gonna be a happy medium. I'm here to prepare what you need to make good decisions for River View School District moving forward.
Also, I think some of the, um, like one or two pager items that we've provided this past year or even previous year, when it comes to like understanding the overall school budgets, really useful. Um, cause it's really complex. And so even just trying to distill that down into a few slides, that's like, you know, here's where, here's where we have flexibility, here's where we don't, you know, kind of just trying to lay it out as simply as we can, even though it's not simple. Um, is useful to the public because we can't necessarily expect that everybody's got time and energy to dive into all the details. But they wanna at least be able to go on the website and like get a general sense of where dollars are going and where is their flexibility and where is there not and, you know, that's useful.
Like the budget and the glance documents and, and like I said, uh, the business office has been very proactive. Um, the community should get the first quarterly here pretty soon. And, uh, our goal is try to make the budgeting process as transparent as possible, direct people to the website that has loads of information and, um, you know, make sure everybody's on the same page there. So we've already taken some steps there, but, um, I'm curious as to asking people some more questions through the strategic planning process of what some of these questions mean or what they're speaking to specifically. Okay, district communication, this is, this is, uh, probably the highest rated area, which is, which is awesome. Um, people are reading district level communications from the superintendent, the administrators, the teachers. And, um, and they're reading them, which is awesome. I always worry that, you know, we're sending too much out and then people are getting tone deaf to some of the things that we're, we're sending out. But this was a, this was a nice metric to, to look at. Still some room for social media. We're gonna keep trying to work on, uh, you know, getting those subscriptions in and having people look at that, um, often. But, uh, we've, I think we've improved greatly over the last five years in terms of social media and getting information out in different ways that our community can respond to or appreciate. Okay, we're almost done here. Um, the purpose, the four top areas that respondents said of why we're here. First one is to challenge academically. Second, promote personal growth and well-rounded students, which I think we do a phenomenal job of here. Third, prepare students for the workforce. And lastly, um, teach students to be collaborative and work together. So that's pretty much in line with our major focus areas, which I'm happy to see. And you could see where respondents chose as, you know, lower level or lower priorities. Although I think, we think all these things are really important. What do you feel is most important? Uh, first is problem solving and critically thinking. Academic knowledge and skills, college and career readiness and ethics, ethics and character. So parents expect us to help teach students ethics and good moral character. And then when we ask them to rank of importance, um, number one is to challenge and provide a challenging, enriching, uh, programming for academics. School safety, which we agree is a really high priority when students are here. Uh, we wanna make sure they're safe. Class size is really important to our community. That was a third place finish. And then maintaining K through six elementary schools in Verona and Oakmont with music and, uh, extracurriculars and programming, all a, a pretty close, you know, fifth and sixth place there. Okay, couple percentages. We asked about, remember we've been talking, board, about master planning? One of the options is K through two, three through six. We specifically asked that in preparation for master planning, uh, on this survey. And this shows, I tried to put these together, fifty-seven percent of the, of the one hundred and fifty respondents, um, disagree or strongly disagree in moving to those primary, those, the primary and intermediate school, uh, option. And then forty-three percent agree or strongly disagree. So sort of in the middle with slightly more not in favor, at least for the parents that completed this survey. Second question we asked was, would you increase class size instead of property taxes? And a majority of people don't wanna do that. Thirty-six percent said, no, agree or strongly agree. Third big picture question was, would you rather cut non-mandated programs? Electives and extracurriculars, sports, et cetera, rather than, you know, to save money? And that this was the most overwhelming where eighty-six percent said, don't do it. And fourteen percent are open to that. Finally, we asked the sleep time. We know we had some parents come to board meetings and ask about a later start time specifically for junior, senior high students. And so this slide here shows that, you know, approximately fifty percent of the respondents on this survey said, uh, they were open to that. Um, twenty-eight percent said maybe with some more details and twenty-three percent said no. So that gives you a little bit of precer- precursor to that, which we can kind of address with additional talks on master planning. That's it. That's your overview. Does anyone have any questions? There's, like I said, there's gonna be more to come. We're gonna have some focus groups of teachers, board members, business owners as well. Uh, that's all part of the strategic planning process. Wendy, it looks like you have something.
Um, yeah, just a, a comment, like, you know, overall, good, good results, you know, that we're seeing. But we also only had a hundred and fifty respondents.
Yeah.
You know, we have over a thousand kids in the district. That could be both parents and seventy-five households.
Yeah, sure, sure.
So it would be nice to have a little higher N.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, if you're, if you're talking about maybe starting high school later, you'd wanna just maybe send out like one question, one or two questions, gonna take two seconds to complete. And these, these strategic plan surveys, they take parents, you know, like an hour to, forty-five minutes to an hour to complete. So it's a lot to ask. So if we start to drill into one particular area where we're really taking it seriously, we can have a two, three question survey, I would say, where parents can just boom, 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 boom. We can definitely get, I think, a higher completion rate for, for some of those questions. But this is sort of a, this is the initial step.
Does it make sense then, um, to kind of maybe space this out and do as we do with nine weeks? Maybe we do like portions of the strategic planning survey so that then we may see a higher response?
Mm-hmm.
They know that it's not going to be as like cumbersome or anything like that. If it's a quick five-minute, ten-minute survey each nine weeks on a different piece, then maybe.
So typically the next step is to, we had a lot of parents say that they'd like to be talked to in more detail. So I wanna reach out to those parents, put them into some small groups and start to suss out some of these issues. And then we could start really drilling down and getting an idea of, you know, what, what some of this data means or provide some, some better information. But yeah, that's, that's not a bad idea at all.
Also too, and it would, it would be nice to see maybe a community, um, strategic plan survey as well. Um, I know that every time like I go to like look at, you know, what questions we're asking this year or, um, you know, what it is we're asking the district to fill out. It is geared towards our parents with current students. Um, and there are plenty of parents that, you know, just had a student graduate that it would be nice to kind of hear from them as well to see what did they think about their twelfth grade, um, students and how their education panned out. Or on the flip side of that, right, um, parents that are coming into the district or even, um, have settled into the district but are about to start kindergarten or first grade and what, you know, aspects they've either, I don't know, experienced or have been visible to. And maybe that we draw, we drill down on, um, the platform that we're using for the study or, yeah, for the study. Um, so like Qualtrics, for instance, you can say, um, do you have a child currently in the district, yes or no? And then depending on that answer, right, that'll take you to a different set of questions than it will the person that responds in the opposite way. So maybe we can make them more dichotomous and, you know, geared towards, um, specific groups of people so that they're also more inclined to take the survey because it relates to them and makes sense to them. The career readiness at, you know, the K through six level is probably not going to be the most applicable at that time versus the parents that are in seven through twelve, um, things like that.
Anyone else?
So what would be our timing in terms of, in particular, more, uh, detail around people's opinions on the start times? Given that we had, you know, obviously only a hundred and fifty people replying to this. Um, and we don't necessarily know what ages and grades, you know, their kids are. Um, some may or may have different opinions based on what, um, that means to them in terms of dropping kids off and picking up and all that.
So my recommendation is we have a deeper discussion on start times through, uh, the master planning process. Because if, if you all as a board sort of weigh out different options or at least, or, or exclude options, that changes things. So if we, so for instance, if we're currently doing school the way we're doing it, which is two K through six schools and a junior, senior high, then start times is a much easier conversation. If we go to a, if we say, all right, it's most cost effective, it's best for kids to go K- If we go to a, if we say, all right, it's most cost effective, it's best for kids to go K through two, three through six. Then that changes start times because you, you know, because now you're busing and you have to sort of, you know.
Right, but that would necessarily happen by like next year, whereas like if we continue, continue as we are. We could feasibly change that a lot sooner as opposed to
We could.
We're looking at saying we're going to move people around our buildings or, you know, capacities around in the next five years. We're not necessarily waiting five years to make that decision.
If we're doing, um, if we're doing things exactly the way we are this year, it could be it's a fairly easy discussion. It's something that we can change easily. So if you as a board want me to get more information from a greater subset of uh, community members on that particular question. I can just send out a one, a one question and get some additional information on that particular question. If that is what the board wills.
I mean, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I think that that's needed in order to get a better picture of what people think about it. Cause a hundred, like Wendy said, a hundred and fifty people replying is not majority, you know, by any means. Um, when we have a thousand kids or more and obviously everybody's got multiple caregivers and parents and whoever, you know, involved with starts and stop times.
It's easy to do.
So uh, I guess I just want to make sure that if we're considering that, we're not necessarily waiting a whole year, you know, because of the master planning process, which is a longer term effort down the road.
I'd also add to that, that because this is something that will affect traffic and we all know what traffic is like in Oakmont particularly and Verona at certain times of day. So getting a pulse for what the community impact is on that too. Um, some of those streets at certain times of the day, it can mean a difference between ten minutes of is it jam packed or is it not? So I think if we're going in that direction, making sure that all the constituents are aware. This is their community and this is where they live. So how does it impact that, the flow of traffic in their spaces?
I'll put together a very short, easy, complete survey. We'll get some additional information in the next week and a half. Anyone else? Okay. Principals, administrators, who wants to start for our student life? Wrap up. Mr. Carter, well, why don't you have Mr. Carter start? This is his first student life sports wrap up since being with us. So we welcome our fairly new athletic director, Mr. Carter, who's doing a great job so far. We're very happy.
Thank you. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
Good, good, good. Alright, so um, for my wrap up, I first like to thank, thank you guys all for the opportunity of actually being the A D here. I've, I've learned a lot, made it through my first season like Dr. English said. Um, super excited. Uh, it was a great, great season. Um, four out of our seven varsity teams made the playoffs. So that's super excited. Um, our lacrosse, I mean, sorry, our cross-country team actually won the Whipple section and they came runner-up in the uh, P I A A state. So they made it to Hershey and came in second place there. So um, extremely proud of them for that. Uh, one of the things that I was able to uh, find out from our coaches and, and players is that they care. Uh, I, I think that it was a great opportunity um, to actually get to know them, to be at the games, see them um, play to just get a, a close-up of all the players and coaches and everything like that. And I'm excited to lead the department. I think that there's big things coming. I think that a young group of kids, uh, some new coaches, everybody is working hard. They got a great work ethic. Everybody's working hard to actually um, be successful here in the athletic department of Riverview. Um, one of the things that uh, during my interview, one of the biggest things was uh, communication. Um, and I think that with the, one of my major accomplishments for this first season was implementing uh, the Sports U communication platform. I think that it's one consistent platform that uh, parents don't have to go elsewhere. They have that platform that they can use and be up to date on everything that's going on um, in the like i- in the um, athletic department. So I'm excited about that and, and um, making sure that all the coaches are utilizing it so that everybody in the community, um, parents and uh, players stay up to date on what's going on. Uh, moving forward, uh, we are we have pretty much all the schedules done for the winter season. Um, and we are trying to do a black and gold night on Wednesday, November twenty-seventh. And what that is, is it's, it's basically a media night type of situation where our photographers are coming in. Um, we're inviting some uh, a DJ in, uh, we're going to announce all the teams. Um, recognize everybody for the winter season. Um, it's based off of the whole March or sort of midnight madness that basketball teams usually do for the first day of uh, official uh, the season starting. So we're working on that right now. Um, and like I said, the, the schedules are pretty much done. Um, something to change, obviously, but uh, that's it for that. One of the things that I do want to thank uh, my, my administration team for the support that they've given me. Um, I know I came in at the end of July, season starting in August. I couldn't have done it without their help. They, they've helped me throughout all this and I definitely want to point out from an event worker, Mrs. Schutz. She, she came through cl- clutch for me on plenty of occasions for some of the days that I needed a game day worker. So I definitely wanted to thank her and um, we have implemented a new event worker space, um, a link so that if anybody is interested in coming out and being an event worker, it's a couple of, oh, well, not, you guys don't get any money since you're board members, but for anybody else, it's a couple of extra bucks that they can you know, earn and also help out with the program and keep things uh, moving smoothly. Any questions? So if you're, if you're sharing with me, we'll do you a hundred dollars uh, an hour. Nah, it's, it, it is actually fifty dollars a game for everybody. So if um, if you know anybody, yeah, if anybody knows, let me know.
I just want to say thank you very much for our successful first fall season.
Thank you, thank you.
Excited for the winter season.
Absolutely.
The media day thing sounds really cool. My only hesitation on that date is that you've got a lot of families out of town for Thanksgiving. Um, especially those that have to travel out of state for Thursday. Uh, so attendance could be challenging that Wednesday, I think that is.
Yes.
So I guess like selfishly, I know I couldn't be there because we're uh, uh, traveling, you know, for the holiday. So um, just wonder if there's another date that we could think about.
So um, we, we thought about that too and being that it's the first one, being that there's only two weeks, we kind of um, figured that we would do it to learn from it this year, even though the attendance may be um, a little bit lacking this year. So it was more of a trial run type of situation where we can, like I said, gather the information and make it a bigger spectacle next year. So we did definitely consider that. Um, I do know that from a photo standpoint, um, Mrs. Hustleton reached out and there wasn't that many dates available in plus before the season started. Uh, I think that Friday is the first day officially of games. So we have scrimmages starting on Saturday, the twenty-third, Monday and Tuesday. So Wednesday was kind of like the only day that we really could do.
Could make work, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking you're going to have some incomplete teams that
Right.
Especially when you're talking lower numbers of kids per team, like for basketball, for example, versus a soccer, you know, like I mean, in terms of numbers, it's like having ten kids there versus having twenty, you know, it's so.
So as far as the pho- photos go, there is a makeup day as far as the photography part of it goes. Um, as far as the uh, the announcing with the spotlight and the DJ and everything like that, that's more just a
Right.
Community.
But I mean, for team photos and things, if this is the opportunity to get that for like your book and all that, you're going to have kids missing.
There will be another one.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, there'll definitely be another one where they can do a full.
Alright.
You know, so where everybody is, is avail- sort of like they did in the fall.
Yeah.
Everybody was available.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Even if it is the first week of the season, like, you know, or even if it's December third or whatever, you know, that following week maybe.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Also, I, I just want to mention, we moved to that our school scheduler. And uh, I think uh, that parents and community members responded really well, where you can kind of subscribe to not only sports, but all the different activities in the district. So we hope that everybody feels like that's a easier accessible way to, to get things into their calendar. So.
Yeah, our school has been awesome. I mean, I've, I've heard a lot of good things about it. It's easy for, or it makes things easier for me as well. Um, when coaches are looking for uh, gym time, they have to look on there first. So it shows everything in all, all the rooms and everything like, in, in all the venues. So it definitely makes things a lot easier.
Mr. Carter, we really appreciate you. You've done an awesome job in your first season. Thank you so much for all that you do. You're doing great. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Mr. Hewitt?
Good evening, everyone. How we all doing tonight?
Good, Mr. Hewitt. Good, Mr. Hewitt.
Love the enthusiasm. Alright, so you guys know how long these reports are. I will try to get through it quickly. I've got five pages of updates from our, our clubs and our student activities. So I promise to, to be as brief as I can without missing anything important. Uh, so the art club, not a big update on there. They're just encouraging us to go check out their Instagram page. We'll make sure that it's not been posted yet, but I want to get that out there so we can see what kind of nice projects that, that they're doing. Uh, the Bible club had a big event last month that we reported on, the prayer at the pool with over fifty uh, attendance. They are now planning an after-school dodgeball or mat ball activity between the sports season. So looking to do something relatively soon. The cultures club and French club, so the, the cultures club is sort of like the junior high version of the French and Spanish club. And um, Mrs. Lepko does both the French and the cultures club. But the cultures club will be doing a crate cooking school event on the fifteenth to learn how to make a free court, three-course French meal. Uh, the French club and cultures club together are getting ready for light-up night and our last big fundraiser. They do a lot of fundraising because then they create baskets with uh, holiday meals that they give to needy families in the district. Both clubs will be having a cheese tasting field trip on the eleventh of December. Uh, GSA has a meeting on Wednesday. Uh, recently they had two students representing Riverview and our L G B Q T community at an event sponsored by the Allegheny Intermediate Unit to discuss L G B Q T issues in schools in general and River U in particular. They both spoke of how supportive Riverview has been and their feelings of being safe at school and respected by the faculty. And I believe, I mean, you guys were there, were they the only students that showed up at the event from all the districts? Representatives? So we're very proud of them for going down. Gifted programs with Doc McNally, a lot of events here. Our Cyber Patriot team in round one, this is a basically a computer science competition. They finished twenty-fifth in the state. This is a nationwide event. So twenty-fifth in the state is uh, pretty good for round one. Round two will be coming up uh, next week, or actually this week on Thursday. We had ten seventh graders attend the creative convention seven at North Allegheny. Eighth grade wordsmith event was last week. The Fair Day Chemistry Lectures that we take our science classes to will be on Wednesday. Uh, as well as the President's Bowl, uh, round two of Cyber Patriot. Seventh grade wordsmith on Friday. Uh, next week is the U P M C Med Lab Job Shadow and on the twentieth is the Pittsburgh Robotics Day at the Convention Center, which is an all-day event. If you did not see the posting yet, our Model U N team this weekend went to Gannon. This is the longest-running continuous Model U N conference in the country. We took our younger students there. We had nine young members of the team go. They made quite an impact on the conference leadership, participated well. There were over three hundred students in attendance from across Pennsylvania. Mostly Northwest P A, Southwestern New York. We won two total awards, bringing our total to five for the year so far. Ryland Ogirdowski got third place honorable delegate as Costa Rica in the Security Council. And the entire team won the best small school for the conference. We've got Princeton coming up on November twenty-first and a conference in Kalamazoo on December fourth and the PIT Model European Union on December tenth. History Day is just really getting up and going. More on that in the coming months. Inclusive leaders, they've got Bachi starting up in two weeks. The group attended the youth summit in preparation for the season a, a week or two ago. Junior class is in full-blown uh, fundraising mode to fund the prom. They are selling candy right now. The Prantos pepperoni rolls will be later, will be picked up, will be ready for pickup later this week. Uh, they had a powder puff game on Saturday. It was a success. I think they raised about five hundred and fifty dollars and the seniors won. Junior High Student Council has been working hard to build leadership skills and develop fun activities for all junior high students. They work with teachers and staff to support the first nine weeks tournament and town hall activities. They have planned spirit days to unite all junior high students. They continue to spend time creating engaging bulletin boards that showcase the fun events that students have been involved in. We're really proud of the kids. We're doing a lot of that work in the junior high. The Key Club is at, currently doing a, something called the Samsung Challenge. They are designing an app for composting to help support the junior high ecology club, which will be, just recently got their stuff together and will be probably approving them in January. Uh, they could win up to two million dollars in equipment and they are currently planning the junior high dance as well. National Honor Society has their induction on the nineteenth at seven P M here. PJAS, uh, most of the students have chosen their project ideas and have completed the necessary registration paperwork. They are now researching some of the required science background information and starting to set up their experiments to collect their data. SAD had Red Ribbon Week, uh, the last week in October handed out the red ribbons. They annually do a tree, uh, it's like a DUI tree that the county comes in, helps them set up. They'll be doing that the week before Thanksgiving. And they actually had a meeting after school today. Senior class did their Halloween, their annual Halloween parade and senior breakfast. I think just about, I'd say a good ninety percent of the kids participated this year. So it was a great turnout. A lot of fun for the kids. They are now currently working on their senior T-shirts. Spanish club will be going to the PIT Center for Latin American Studies on December sixteenth. The students will participate in some different art activities as well as learn about some cultural and historical information. They are also hoping to set up a discussion with a photo journalist who works in Latin American countries. And they are looking to get a chance to speak with an Amazonia chief um, later, possibly in December. Or it may not be until early next year. High School Student Council, they're currently working on organizing a dignity drive for local homeless shelters. They're having a meeting, they, they had a meeting last week. So students can organize a committee to create posters and announcements for this collection drive. They will also begin discussing their ideas for the Super Bowl. That's S O U P, Super Bowl food drive that we, it's a competition with Springdale. So make sure to pay attention for that because we need to beat Springdale in the Super Bowl. I think they've won two in a row and that's just not acceptable. I think they won two in a row. We won the first one and they won the last two. I think so. At least they didn't make us wear orange and black last year like they did the first time. It's a little rough. Yearbook, yearbook, uh, now that the fall sports season is over, the students are focusing on selecting from their photographs. They had the yearbook worthy ones to place on the pages. They will then go through the process of uploading, tagging, placing, cropping and captioning. The major designs have been finished with the sports clubs. Junior high sections this month are going to wrap up picture makeups, retakes, senior portraits and schedule club and activity group picture day that um, that Andre Carter was talking about there just a minute ago. Grace Notes performed at the Belvoki Treble Choir Festival. Don't know if I pronounced that correctly, but we'll give it a whirl. Uh, they did that on Sunday, October twenty-seventh at the First Presbyterian Church of Edgewood. Um, no updates from the, the orchestra. I think Mr. Libel gave us every single date in the last update. It probably took up another two pages for the orchestra and those dates and the band is currently transitioning from marching band to concert band activities. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt.
And those of you at the um, student life committee, you'll be getting this report on Thursday.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Dr. Monroe. Werner. Hey, we, we have to switch it up. We have to switch it up.
Kind of placing bets on who was going to go next. And I'm way shorter than everyone else. We've um, every day five, um, our cards are pulled. We've, every day five, our cards are pulled as part of our school-wide positive behavior and kids earn an extra reward. And then, we also have had rewards for students getting no marks in their behavior binders for August and September. And October just finished because we kind of sneak a little bit into November. So, those will be starting. 2nd grade visited the fire department. 3rd grade visited the Kerr Museum. We had a fire prevention month poster with the Verona Fire Department. So, they have them, everybody K through 6 made one. So, they probably have lots of posters to go through. Lexi, the therapy dog, thank you, Dr. Z, for that connection, came and visited grades K to 2. And she will be back on the 21st for grades 3 through 6. We had some Veterans Day activities today. Students and staff decorated a bulletin board. Every student got sent home stars to put family members' names on the stars. And then, the students decorated and put them up. And we had some special announcements this morning. And then, the entire building after the pledge sang the song, "America." So, our whole song sang together. It was pretty cool. We've had a VIP breakfast where students were able to bring their very important person to school and have breakfast with them in the morning. The PTO had penny wars. It was fierce competition, but 6th graders strategically waited till the last day and sabotaged everyone else. So, we had some good, good strategy going. So, the 6th graders won and we just have to pick a day that's going to cooperate with the weather. It will be 6th graders against faculty for kickball was their reward. PTO could be intense, just saying. You know, we don't lose. So, lollipop contest was done by student council. There was, they made these lollipop little, like those little Halloween bucket things. And K to 2, 3 to 6, and then staff. They wanted the staff to be involved. So, there were three buckets and whoever came the closest won the bucket of lollipops. We had our classroom parties and celebrations for Halloween, followed by our annual parade. And let's see what else we got coming on. Oh, we have some, the Scholastic Book Fair is coming up this week. And we have the Humane Animal Rescue of Pittsburgh doing an assembly on the 25th, as well as some activities around epilepsy awareness and grief awareness days in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Monroe. And last but not least, Dr. Z.
Okay. We have a lot going on at 10th Street Elementary School. So, we have a new recycling program, the Green Raiders. And they come and recycle every Tuesday and Thursday. And our PTO will be providing them some gray t-shirts. So, when you see kids in green, that would be the Green Raiders. And they have a theme song we play on the morning show. So, you might want to check that out. Good Fire Prevention Week, the Oakmont Fire Department comes each and every year. They do a great job. And we had over 50 kids submit fire prevention posters and whatnot. And that was the first week of October. PTO hosted an outdoor movie night. It was the most crowded it's ever been. I think we had probably 400 people here for Despicable Me 4. So, that was fantastic. So, we appreciate that. The annual book fair took place the week of 15th through the 17th. And we had our open house as well. We partner now with Mystery Lovers. So, that's been really great. That's our second book fair with them, which we appreciate. Red Ribbon Week was celebrated the week of October 21st through the 25th. The theme was, "Life is a Movie, Live Drug-Free." We did a number of great things that week. At the end of the week, we had parents call into our morning show. Mrs. Jacobs Rohan won a shirt. I think she wears that all the time now. But that was a great way to end our week. We had our first-ever fall festival here. That was held on the 25th of October. And we had a lot of things going on where that evening scavenger hunt games, inflatable in the gym, food. We sold 200 Chick-fil-A sandwiches. We ran out, actually. And we had a haunted hallway on the second floor. And it was well-attended, very, very well-attended. Parent-teacher conferences were held on the 4th of November. We had over 90% of our parents participate in that. Our annual Veterans Day program was held this morning. It's a student-led ceremony and we had a follow-up breakfast. We had 40 veterans come and eat breakfast with us this morning. We're currently holding a sleep challenge. Our wellness committee is sponsoring that. We're encouraging students to track their sleep. And they are able to submit their form and their winning student will receive a Life Comfort Family Blanket, a blanket where the whole family can get under. It's, it's quite large. So, we have a, a number of people excited about that. And we are collecting for the KDK Turkey Fund. This is our 10th year doing that. Pittsburgh Today Live will be here tomorrow. I assume it will be shown on Wednesday. I'll make sure that everybody knows about that. But they'll be interviewing our kids, our student council, and Mrs. Orban, who, the student council continues to amaze me with their good work. They already held a bake sale for the KDK Turkey Fund, raised over $500, which of course, PNC doubles. So, that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Z. We have a great administrative team. So, I just want to take some time to appreciate our administrators and our staff that are working so hard to provide lots of opportunities to students. Thank you for presenting. It's always good to have a good reminder of all the really amazing things that we do in the district. It's wonderful. Okay. Fortunately, the agenda items are short, so the rest of the meeting should go fairly quickly. It's heavy in presentations, short on agenda items. But let's move into the first hearing of citizens. This is designated for board agenda topics only. If you'd like to speak, please sign in. Come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Keep in mind that the board doesn't typically respond to public comment, rather takes the hearing of consideration into future governments. Also, realize that all comments and meetings are recorded. And there is a second hearing at the end of the meeting for all school-related topics. Mr. Tillman?
Ernie Tillman, 1231 Pennsylvania Avenue, Oakmont. You've got to tilt that up, probably. You've got to tilt over the place.
Can I get closer?
Yeah, I'm not going to get much closer. As long as you guys can hear me. Neil and Wendy, in response to your comment about the 150 respondents. Neil, I believe you said only respond for your highest-grade child. So, you need to have some data in that survey about how many households it was. Because it was 150 households, not 150 students. So, the percentage of response may be significantly higher than
Yeah.
indicated by 150. You're welcome.
Anyone else want to speak in our first hearing? Remember, there will be a second hearing at the end of the meeting. Anyone else?
My name is Nick Paradise, 416 Fifth Street in Oakmont. I'm here, I came aware on Friday of comments by Board President Jen Shapiro. And, you know, I think it's really important that that gets addressed. Consider that on our board governance. I don't know. I didn't want to wait for the end of the meeting. It's really disappointing, unfortunately not surprising. But it's just, I can't get over what a terrible message. Excuse me, yes.
Perhaps we can wait to the second hearing for all board-related issues. Mr. Paradise? This is not on the agenda for this evening, but...
Is board governance listed on the agenda?
Board.
All right.
Is that okay? Thank you. Okay. Let's, anyone else like to speak? On board agenda topics? Okay. I want to, let's jump into motions and review of potential motions for approval at the voting meeting. Let's start with business and finance. Ms. Luber?
Thank you. I have four motions for approval. Number one, draw collective capital improvements 23-S18-01, capital improvements 2024 for basic services, ending September 30th, 2024. Number two, draw collective for capital improvements 23-S18-01, capital improvements 2022 for basic services, ending September 30th, 2024. I would like to request a motion to approve the closure of our KeyBank account and transfer those funds to our Dollar Bank General Fund. And number four, disposal slash recycling and certified data destruction of 125 desktop, desktop computers and monitors and 100 student devices as presented. Do I have any questions or concerns?
Are we going to, just making sure my mic was on. Are we going to get a copy of the KeyBank closure account to see what, how much is being transferred to the Dollar?
So, that account is getting an interest rate of .03. And I'm transferring it into an account that's getting over 5% interest. That, that bank was sitting, it has about $983,000 in it. So, I'm transferring it into the general fund. It's based on interest rates.
I got you. If we could get a copy of that, though,
Sure.
so that we see that transfer.
Yep.
And we should probably document that on our meeting minutes and agenda for our voting meeting, so that the public also knows that that money is being transferred and how much.
Sure.
That would probably be awesome. And then, the disposal, is there a particular, like, contract or facility that's doing this? Or is it? So, we have a contract that? Okay.
It's probably similar to our shredding. We, we call them up. We get a quote for shredding. They come on a specific day. We have all of the boxes ready and they, they take care of it on-site. Anyone else?
Thank you, Ms. Luber. Let's move into agreements, contracts, and resolutions. We have for your approval, the annual resolution for next week to, for Riverview to participate in the AIU's joint purchasing. This allows us to utilize the bargaining power of the 42 Allegheny County schools in order to save money on district resources. We also have a health services collaboration agreement with Forbes Road, which allows our health team to collaborate with Forbes Health Team on issues related to our Forbes students. We have an MOU with the RESPA Union regarding vacation days, which allows the buildings to continue to stay covered, which is in the best interests of our students and staff. Finally, we have an agreement with the Holy Family Specialized Learning School for one of our students. Are there any questions regarding any of these items? These have all been, these have all been analyzed by our legal team as well.
Yeah, of course, I have a question. The agreement with Holy Family Specialized Learning, I saw that it said that we will still pay the rate of $239 per day then if the child is present or not present. Is that standard or?
Yes, that is standard. Any other questions? Thank you. Let's move into board governance. We have our third and final readings of the policies listed below. I also want to plug the policy committee meeting. This is scheduled for tomorrow at 1:00 PM. We are meeting virtually and in person in the central office conference room to discuss the 100 and 200 series policies. Both the PSBA recommended policies, as well as the policies in those series without particular recommendations from PSBA. So, we've done a lot of work on that and we're excited to meet tomorrow. We'll also be asking for your approval of the 25-26 school calendar, which we typically get approved in November in order to provide our school community with plenty of time to make arrangements for the upcoming 25-26 school year. Are there any questions regarding these items in board governance? Next meeting, there will be a whole ton of policies, okay? Lots of them. So, be ready for lots of policies in our next board meeting. Okay. Let's move into personnel. We'll be asking for your approval of some precision HR personnel, including nurse, para, and teacher subs. We also be asking your approval of two assistant baseball coaches, one volunteer baseball coach, a 7th grade boys' basketball coach, and a 9th grade boys' basketball volunteer. We're excited about that. We also have multiple para professionals moving from temporary status to permanent. We will be asking for your approval of a custodial resignation, as well as for multiple event workers that Mr. Carter talked about briefly when he came up to speak. We will ask, also be asking for your approval of an Article 7 Sabbatical Leave Extension, as well as a student-teacher from Slippery Rock in our music department. Any questions on personnel items? Fairly standard for this time of year. Okay, student life. We're almost to the second hearing, I promise. Let's move into student life. We have two items for your purview. First are the budgetary outlines for Spanish Club, Junior High Student Council and Builders Club, and the Junior Class Officers and Prom Committee, Senior Class Officers, and the National Honor Society. We will also be asking for your approval to dissolve the Pom Pom Club. This hasn't been acted since 2014, which is no longer in existence. And we will be asking your approval to transfer the remaining balance into the Cheer account in RABBA. Any questions on these items? The Pom Pom Club. Okay. Yes. No education items this month. We'll be asking for your approval of the October 7th and 21st board meeting minutes. Any additions, omissions, or corrections to the meeting minutes? Anything, board members?
Is there a way to add the link to the recordings on this? Now that we have those on YouTube via BoxCast?
Yeah, I don't see why we couldn't.
Just be handy to be able to watch it if you want to live, you know, [inaudible] rather than just the minutes themselves.
Okay.
Maybe in the reverse to, well, this is, that's extra, never mind.
Okay. Yeah, we could put the link, although, yes. That shouldn't be an issue.
Or you can write a note to say where the link is.
A note, yeah, yeah, like a marker. Yeah, that's good. Okay. Second hearing of citizens. This is designated for all school-related topics. Thank you for your patience. If you would like to speak, come, sign in. Come to the microphone, state your name and address. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. Keep in mind, the board does not typically respond to public comment, but rather takes the hearing into consideration for future governance. Also, please realize that all comments and meetings are recorded. Mr. Paradise, come on up. Thanks. Sorry about that.
Apologies mine. I apologize for being immature.
No, no, it's no big deal. It's no big deal. I'm sorry to make you wait. I apologize.
Just caught you the chase. Just to see things like that said, oh, it's supposed to be an elected leader in a nonpartisan position. Jen, I think you should resign. I think you should maybe even think about backing up your big talk and renounce your American citizenship, barring those things. So, I call on the board to move to censure, consider stripping of presidency position. Show, make a statement that, you know, regardless of where voting allegiances lie, the, the board is held to a higher standard than that. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Yes, Bob Geisel, Art 719, Allegheny Boulevard. Normally I would say to someone, if they have a problem, board members, they should run. Mr. Paradise did. Nobody wanted you. So my suggestion is you take your ideas and just keep them to yourself, to have someone resign that's up here. Again, you can try to run again, you'll probably be in the same situation. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan?
Sylvia Sullivan, 139 Oakmeadow. I actually mentioned this to me, and I was, I wasn't able to come last meeting, and I really wanted to, but I had a medical thing. So I tried to watch online, and it like kept stopping and then wouldn't, like it wouldn't go where, I don't know. It was, and I checked my internet, like, and the kids were streaming stuff, so like it was working. So I just wonder about the recording, because I didn't, I didn't, honestly, I didn't go check it, but because I watched most of it. But I would check the recording, just make sure, because it kept stopping. And then I'd have to like refresh the whole thing and then get back in, and like then it would like repeat, so I don't know. I don't know, and I know we're new to this recording thing, but I would just maybe check it and see if it was actually like stopping there, because so just that. And then I just wanted to thank Dr. Z. He's just been so supportive of everything. That Fall Festival was awesome. And I think most of it was mostly his idea. The PTO and him, and it was just, it was so fun. It was a great turnout. My son won the costume contest. But he's also doing like a night at the school for the sixth grade celebration, like, kind of like Night at the Museum, but he, it was his idea. And so we're selling raffle tickets for that, so I want to plug that, but if people want to buy tickets. But yeah, he's gonna have like, whoever wins gets to bring nine friends, have dinner at the school at night. It'll be like super fun. And so I just really appreciate all of his, you know, ideas and helping us out with everything, so thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
That's awesome, though. You should see about getting the, maybe access to the costumes from the music department downstairs, and it being like a real night at the museum. I didn't say that, though, because they may kill me. Right.
So hi, my name's Kristy Botner, 910 Washington Avenue. And I just wanted to, um, reiterate the support. I have a kid in high school, middle school, and elementary school, and they are all just having fantastic experiences. And I also just wanted to take this opportunity to thank our board of volunteers and neighbors in our community who are putting forth their own personal time to make sure that our school district is successful. Thank you so much. I know it's a thankless job. I most certainly wouldn't want to do it, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Tomlinson?
Good evening. Paula Tomlinson, 234 Third Street. First, I want to say thank you, Dr. English, for a couple of things that I had asked that I found very informative and, and, you know, just for you to open up your office and do breakfast with Dr. English was awesome. And of course, I had a medical emergency and couldn't be here, but I'll be at the next one. So even if one person comes one time, we'll get more, we'll get more folks to come. Thank you for bringing back the nicotine program. I'm trying to promote it. I know everybody's schedules are crazy, but it is an amazing program. And I sat beside Mrs. Rice at the last one, and she learned things she didn't even know, and she thought she was pretty up on things. The Sean, the Clay and Smith, Shape the Sky, I really hope folks come, because they're awesome, awesome programs. We're really lucky to have them come free of charge. So I've been posting like open, free, open to the public, and somebody asked, can kids come? So I know Shape the Sky feels a lot parent-oriented. And the nicotine, there were high school kids that came, some of the sad group members, but can you clarify?
I'm just gonna speak to this quickly, because those are two really good programs we're trying to promote. Not Shape the Sky, that's for only parents, okay? That one, that digital.
Yes.
That's only for parents. Nicotine, everybody, students can come. I'm gonna try to get my own kids to come. And both those events are open to all of our surrounding school districts, so we've asked them to promote it as well.
Okay.
So.
Last but not least, Mr. Carter's doing an amazing job. I love the app. I'm a huge supporter of our athletic programs. I am one of many parents that have volunteered through the years to help. And we've done our own little web chat, text, and, you know, just to try to get people informed, so this is an awesome platform. Really looking forward to, you know, how it's gonna make everything run so much smoother, and congratulations to all our fall athletes. Soccer, football, boys and girls soccer went to playoffs, right? And so, thank you for everything.
Thank you, Ms. Tomlinson. Anyone else like to speak this evening? Anyone?
Dr. English, when are those dates for Shape the Sky and Adagio?
Okay, November 13th is the nicotine vaping that's here from 6:00 to 7:30, right here in the auditorium, 6:00 to 7:30. That's a phenomenal event that has Adagio Health and a really renowned researcher for vaping, Dr. Chu. He came a couple of years ago. We hoped that there would be more people here. We're gonna really do our best to try to promote and get as many people. And then a week later, on the 20th, is Shape the Sky, and that's about social media, artificial intelligence. It's a really, really great program as well. So that's, we try to schedule them in between the sports so that people could clear out the schedules to come join us. But we'll, we'll try to, you know, try to get the word out as much as we can and try to fill the seats as, as much as we can. But they're both really, really great events, so I hope people can join us. Okay, thank you. Sorry?
Actually, but also before we end too, I do want to just make a general statement. I do understand that, you know, community members may not like the opinions of board members. But when those opinions are shared personally, and especially on social media, it is hard to, I think, kind of disassociate us from our roles. But when we make those on our personal platforms, they are personal. They're not intended to be representative of this board and of our roles. And again, I know that's hard to disassociate, but I think if we can try to go to why we're all here. You know, I have worked with Jen for the last three years, and while we made butt heads, look, I butt heads with probably everyone on this board, because I'm very opinionated myself. As a person and just as a school board director, as a school board president, this woman goes above and beyond. It is a really selfless and thankless job, but at the end of the day, we, and I, I do think that I can adamantly say that these members here do not bring our political views into this room. We don't avidly share them. We don't, you know, make it one way or the other, because it's, it's really about the kids. At the end of the day, and I don't know, maybe it's me being younger and closer to our students, but our students aren't worried about, you know, these political issues that we're necessarily worried about. They're worried about getting their homework done. They're worried about what classes they're going to be in. They're worried about how many people are in their classes. They're worried about the assignments that they're getting, the exams that they're taking. What kind of friends are they going to make? How well are they going to do in their studies or their sports and stuff? And the people that surround me up here are trying to make a difference in those aspects. And that's what truly matters. We're trying to make sure that the kids have everything that they have in need in this district. And so I think, you know, I would just ask the community, parents, students, anyone, to really just reflect on that and really just know that our focus here is for the students. Everything else, kind of be damned. It really should just be about the students in this room, so, thank you.
Thank you, Antonio. I'll say very little, but I do want to remind folks that I came to this work, as all of us probably have, to help our community, to help our students, because this is not a small amount of time or dedication, you know, that needs to be given to do this job. And it's the biggest volunteer job I've ever held, and I've held a bunch of them over the years. And so you don't take on this work lightly, and I certainly never took on this work thinking that it's some political, like stepping stone to some other big role. Unfortunately, this, being on this board is, it is an elected position. So unfortunately, it is partisan to get here. I don't bring my politics to the seat. But in order to run, it does have to be a political endeavor, if you will, because I answer to people who are voting for me or not voting for me. And I've never been shy about my political affiliation. I think most people even know where I live, have seen yard signs, et cetera. So that should really come as no shock to anyone. And I'm here to represent and be inclusive of all in our district. So if I say something personally in my own life, in my own world, I'm not speaking on behalf of our district. I'm not even speaking on behalf of the people sitting at this table. I, I don't ever claim to speak for anyone but myself. So, uh, I said, that's really the end of the story. There, there's no leg to stand on in terms of, you know, wanting to leave because of a personal comment or something like that. I'm gonna leave this district better than how I found it. That's my goal. Along with a lot of other small goals, you know, that fall underneath that. And it has nothing to do with what, you know, title I'm trying to get next at all. I'm bringing my skills to the table to help, and the things that I feel are important. And the reasons that I moved here 13 years ago was partly for the school district. I thought it was good, but it, over the years, learned that we could do even better. So that's why I'm here.
I have to congratulate you. You are the first person in 63 years of life that has ever called me a racist and a misogynist. So thank you for that. You represent the school district. You represent the parents of this district. And you basically called, called half of the parents in this district racist and misogynist. And if you don't think that's in somehow conflict with your oath of office and your ethical commitment to this school district, I think you're mistaken. Unfortunately, I think there's probably a few members of the board who thoroughly agree with your statement, but have the sense to not put it out there in public and offend half of the parents of the school district. So, yeah, censure, resign, I mean, that's a personal decision. But to pretend that you can separate that from your job in the board and your job in the district is a lie. It's a flat-out fallacy. Those are deep-held contempt and hateful things that you said about half of us. And that can't go away, and it's not gonna go away. That's all.
Thank you, everyone, for attending. I think I'll leave with a couple things. I think it's important for us to remember, you know, some of the data at the beginning and remember that our students here are doing so well. And the community is really happy with, with the school. And so I'm gonna leave today and think, think about some of the things that we discussed tonight in a, in a positive light. I know everybody's doing their best to, to provide the best leadership we can here. So I hope everybody's happy with the district. We'll continue to do the work. I know the board will continue to do that work as well. Thank you for attending. It's good to have people come to the meetings. Please continue to come. Our voting meeting is scheduled for next Monday. Our policy meeting is tomorrow at 1:00. You can find information on our website. Thank you again to the administration for presenting, and have a wonderful week. We'll see you next Monday.